I was a thought about this thing, yeah. Where's the SE group? We're doing this by Zoom?
I can see and hear.
We hear you.
I can see and hear you.
Good enough.
Okay.
We see your name on the screen.
I'll try to figure out how to make it show my picture. I or me. Oh, here it is. Okay.
There you are. Morning Nancy.
Morning.
What time is it?
Uh, two P M.
Good for you. Shall we go? Now, before we begin today's meeting, let us have a moment of silence to respect our friend, our mentor, our leader, Mark Dakota. A moment of silence. Thank you. We send our best to Nancy and the Dakota family. A roll call.
Ross.
On Berko alternate.
Michael Bell member.
Rich Rita select board ex officio.
Bill Spence member.
Catherine Brennan member.
Morgan Dean member.
Rick Smith member.
John Racine member.
Uh, Nancy Knight alternate.
Minutes. Pieces of paper everywhere. Okay, August fourteen minutes.
Well, they printed out bill or the ones of your suggestions already.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question. So, uh, in line forty, it's, um, the council advised the comment there, but Laura Specter Morgan is not mentioned as members of the public who spoke. I don't know if that's an issue or not, or she's not mentioned by name there where, um, so I don't know if that means anything at all, but.
I think it's valid. Thank you. As alternative, no members, members of the public. I think she should be mentioned as counsel.
Just because she says that she's speaking.
Yes. Okay.
In line fifty-one, yeah, line fifty-one, uh, okay, so uh, starting at fifty, okay, noting they are illustrative and not guarantee of a final appearance, not a guarantee. I know it's pet and B, but not a guarantee of a final appearance.
Yeah, I like that.
And then, um, and then just confirming line fifty-three, I think it's fine. So that then we're saying that the, um, it was requested the additional or three D renderings, but not additional implies that they were already given, but they were two D renderings.
I think it says somewhere up here, non forty-nine. The board also viewed two D digitally rendered images, but we did request.
Three D rendering.
Yeah, so I left it that way.
I don't, it's, I don't care.
Uh, well.
Additional implies that, or I think it, we already had it, but we didn't when they were two D. Sorry, and then the last one, something, so we, Rich Rita's re- down in line seventy-eight. So he's giving a select report, but do we have to mention that he was receded or that he, you know, that he recused himself at all? So, because he's. Yeah, so, because up here he's a full member in attendance online, but then, and then we.
Just add it to before the committee reports.
So he came back, but it doesn't mention that he was recused either. Oh, they did, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Almost all.
All right, we came back before the.
Um, I want to change a little something on line eighty-three. Uh, reporting from the conservation meeting that John Racine recused himself during their discussion of the outdoor adventure zone. I was, I left that wrong during their discussion.
Okay.
So do you just want me to say, or you wanted to say John Racine reported that her last meeting included discussion of the outdoor adventure zone, however, he refused himself in that discussion? That sound good?
Any other amendments? Is there a motion? Uh, Tim?
Like clarification on the difference between a two D and three D rendering that viewed upon by the board.
Two D rendering is. Well, I think that's self-explanatory. It's two dimensional. The three D rendering was intended to be in the three dimensions, providing that is what was, uh, anticipated was the ability to maneuver the, their rendering and see the landscape in three dimension from any of the three hundred and sixty degrees perspective. That is to be able to see what the structure would look like from Valley Road, from Town Square, from the ice arena, or any other perspective.
So that being immersive into the world.
Okay.
That was the, that was the intention, but.
So the definition between two D and three D rendering, a two D rendering is flat.
Yes.
Three D rendering is something that is, has three dimensions involved in the rendering.
Yes, yes.
So what we provided was a three D rendering by definition. What you're asking is for computer animation and immersion. Those are two different things, and I just want to clarify that for the board. So when they're asking for the differential between what you expect and what they provided.
Okay.
It reflects in the minutes that you did provide a three D render.
Well, so the, what was provided was a rendering that had depth perception. Is that what you mean by? That is, you could make the distinction between what was close to the viewer and what was distant from the viewer. Is that what you mean by three D?
Correct.
Okay, I can accept that.
Could I make a suggestion, Mr. Chair? Since we're, since this is, uh, looking at the minutes as what was said at the time, uh, perhaps we leave it as is, and then in the minutes for this meeting, uh, you grant, uh, Tim privilege of the floor where he can make those points and specifically mention the minutes here so that it shows up in the minutes, uh, your.
Of this meeting.
Of this meeting, your comments about the language and this meeting.
Okay, I'll wait until privilege of the floor.
Good. But.
It has to be what was said, this meeting, as minutes, even if it's incorrect.
Okay.
Any other suggestions? Is there a motion?
I move we accept the meeting minutes as amended. Second.
Do you have to save the date of which ones?
Uh, August fourteenth, twenty twenty seven.
Thanks. All in favor? Pass. Meeting, August eighteen.
Um, lines eleven and thirteen, Nancy's mentioned as being in attendance and then being absent.
That's correct.
Was she there?
She was not seated.
Nancy, August eighteenth. We were at the site visit?
I think, I think you need to say, I was, I was there, but I wasn't there.
Nancy was there.
She's weirded.
Oh, I think she was there.
Can't hear you, Nancy.
Thumbs up or thumbs down? Were you there?
Yes, she was. She was there.
She was there. Yes, definitely.
There. Uh, I guess while we're doing this too, Rob Wilson, member absent, um, alternate member absent.
I was absent. Alicia.
And lastly, Alicia, I was not in attendance as a former member because I had recused myself. So I think I was there, but I think you have to repeat that I was recused. Or put me down, uh, public in attendance.
Any other amendments? Is there a motion?
I move we accept the minutes of August eighteenth as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass.
I abstain. I was recused.
Got that, Alicia?
I'm not voting on these minutes.
Okay. Minutes, August twenty-two. Hey, we got the attendance correct this time?
So, uh, line twenty, so it talks about the two councils that are here for the applicant and the select board, but Laura is not mentioned there for the council for the planning board.
That's an omission. Yes, she needs to be there. She's mentioned here.
Mentioned to again, okay, so, so Rich was recusing himself, so he's in men, he's in members of the public who spoke. But does, do we have, do we have to again mention that he's recused or no? Doesn't? I don't know.
I mean, I.
I don't know.
Again, I wasn't at any of these meetings, so I listened to them over and over, but it, he said in the other meeting that he was.
He was recusing.
I think it's good.
Yeah.
I was happy with the way it was.
Yeah. I think it's just not mentioning him is the.
Yeah.
He wasn't there.
That's right.
A member of the vote.
Okay. We replace line twenty-two with, uh, with the period or there's a comma, yeah.
Well, I'll add Laura there.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, you're talking about the comma after Tom Innes. Yeah.
When we talk about, so when, before Laura spoke, um, uh, started speaking about line fifty-nine, my recollection was, um, she was talking about, uh, reading to the board what, uh, seeing if we wanted to adopt finding a fact. And then she, that was my recollection. Yep. Um.
There was a motion.
Okay, right, so does it? It's there at the end to adopt them. Okay, right, as her own finding of fact, so she concluded.
So like in the meeting, we talked about all these things and then said, and if you want these to be your finding of fact, you should make a motion.
And I mean, yes. Right.
Yeah, so we did that.
Okay. And then eighty-two, the zoning ordinance gives guidelines for off-street parking. Should we mention that, what that zoning ordinance is? I can't remember if she, I don't know if it's.
Literally from the finding.
Okay.
That she put in the notice of decision, but that was stated there.
Okay.
Yes, one of the problems with minutes is that it has to be exactly as stated.
Yeah.
Even if there's a grammatical error somewhere in the statement of motion, whatever, you know, I often take exception to the way the motion, but that's the way it was stated. So that's the way it has to be in the minutes.
Okay.
So I have a question. I was on Zoom. So is this, um, you know, an excerpt from the decision, like to your point, Bill? You know, it's what stated in the meeting. These weren't read off because I didn't, they were read verbatim.
She obviously read it. She didn't.
I was zoning off.
I bold pointed it to make it easier to follow.
Yeah.
One big run on sentence, but that's what she, yeah, she.
Okay, I didn't recall.
Yeah.
Any other comments? May I have a motion?
I move we accept the meeting minutes of Thursday, August twenty-second as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
That you read that.
Yes.
And I abstain from this remark.
Okay, next item on the, uh, we've done what the minutes, a roll call, not enough. Okay, next. Uh, Tim, you have the privilege of the floor.
Sure. I think we already know what I'm gonna say. So, uh, the three D rendering that was delivered at the last meeting was new department by the board and not being a three D rendering. A three D rendering that, that was provided by Tyro, Tyro Group was indeed a three D rendering as defined as, uh, having depth with length and a visual, visual impact of popping out. Um, that is what three D renderings are. What, what the board is expecting was an immersive experience that's AI or computer generated. Um, those are two different things. Um, I would prefer if the minutes reflected that the, that the Tyro Group did, uh, uh, give a three D rendering, as I believe that was a incorrect, uh, statement that they did not provide them the rendering. However, that advised me to make mention in the public comments that that is our opinion.
Okay, accepted. And future will, uh, make the distinction. Okay. But that's fine. I accept what you said, Tim. All right, next item on the agenda, I believe, is planning board procedures. Yes, I, I wanted, the planning board has been under heavy load recently, and I want to explain the role of the planning board and how it operates under New Hampshire law and how public input fits into our decision-making process. Waterville Valley Planning Board operates under the authority granted by the New Hampshire state law, specifically RSA six seventy-four and RSA six seventy-six, as well as the town's zoning ordinances, subdivision regulations, and site plan review regulations. The planning board is legally obligated to evaluate each application based on these statutes and regulations, which ensure that any decision we make, whether approval, denial, or conditional approval, complies with state law and local regulations. Public comments are an important part of this process. The community input helps the board understand concerns and identify potential impacts that otherwise might not be apparent. We encourage residents to share their input during the public hearing process and thank those who participate. However, while public input is valuable, the board's decision must ultimately be based on law, the facts surrounding each application, and the applicable regulations. Public comments may influence whether conditions should be applied to an approval to help balance the applicant's legal right to develop its property with the town's goals, values, and protections specified in ordinances, regulations, and state law. Nevertheless, the planning board cannot approve or deny an application based on popularity or the number of people supporting or opposing a project. Our responsibility is to evaluate every application without prejudice or bias. The board does not take a position for or against any specific project. Instead, we apply the town's ordinances and regulations equally and consistently to all applications. Both applicant and members of the public have equal opportunity to present information, evidence, and expert findings. The board's role is to ensure the process remains fair, transparent, and grounded in law. All properties within designated zoning districts carry certain development rights under the town's ordinances, and those rights are exercised in compliance with the town's regulations, regardless of the nature of the proposed purpose or proposed use. All applications are evaluated under the same standards, and all property owners are treated equally. If residents wish to restrict or prohibit certain types of development, the proposed procedure is to propose the adoption of a new ordinance or the amendment of an existing ordinance, either by working with the planning board to draft such proposals or by independently preparing a warrant article for the next town meeting where voters may approve or reject the proposed changes. The planning board cannot modify existing ordinances in response to a submitted application. There are approximately seven hundred residents in Waterville Valley with about four hundred registered voters. Voters are strongly encouraged to attend and to participate in town meeting because town meeting is the venue where decisions about changes to ordinances are made. The board first evaluates an application for completeness, that is, whether it includes all of the required documents. This typically includes, but is not limited to, engineering drawings showing the site layout, building placement, parking, drainage, utilities, flood hazard areas, landscaping, screening, easements, and legal considerations. While concerns about the community character and aesthetics are welcome, state law requires that planning board decisions be based on compliance with objective, measurable standards contained in the town's ordinances and regulations. Aspirational statements in the master plan, such as goal or vision statements, do not carry legal weight unless adopted into the town ordinances. If a planning board decision is appealed, the court will base its judgment on whether the decision is supported by ordinances and measurable regulatory standards, not on the aspirational statements. Similarly, the planning board's decision must be based on verified information. If an, if an applicant makes statements such as, this will work out favorably, but we can't imagine that this would not be sufficient, or it will be fixed later, such claims must be substantiated by credible third-party experts or technical studies before the board can rely upon such statements and accept them as fact. It should be noted here that materials such as the perspective renderings or computer-generated images are considered illustrative. The legally binding commitments that the applicant makes are found in the engineering plans and supporting documents submitted with the application, and these documents form the basis for any condition of approval that may be applied under RSA six seventy-four or six seventy-six. The planning board is made up of volunteer residents, not experts. If conflicting claims among arise, uh, arise among applicants, abutters, consultants, or lawyers, the planning board may, under RSA six seventy-six, paragraph four, subparaphrase L, require an independent third-party expert evaluation on matters such as parking capacity, traffic, drainage, or noise. When the board determines that expert studies are needed for clarification, the applicant is responsible for the cost of those studies as allowed by law and as specified in our site plan review regulations. If the applicant declines to provide the requested information or refuses to authorize requested expert studies, the board may deny the application without prejudice. A denial without prejudice means that the applicant may submit a new application in the future, which would be reviewed as if it were presented for the first time. The planning board's legal duty and responsibility is to base its decision on facts, evidence, and applicable law. Approving an application without adequate supporting evidence could expose the town to legal challenges and undermine the board's statutory obligations. We, the planning board members, are volunteers serving the community. Our decisions are supported by our professional planning consultant, our municipal council, and independent experts. These professionals ensure that our decisions are thorough, defensible, and consistent with New Hampshire law and the town's regulations. Our shared goal is to ensure that each application is reviewed fairly, transparently, and in the best interest of the town of Waterville Valley, while respecting the rights granted to property owners under the law. But, uh, if there are any, you know, we can discuss it further if anybody has any comments, but we have some important guests here this morning, and we wanted to hear from the SE group to give us a review of these ordinance, which we have, uh, examined carefully in the last few months. May I turn this meeting over to you?
Definitely.
Would you tell us, uh, who you are?
Yeah, um, good to see everyone again. Uh, my name is Alex Bolans. I'm a senior associate with SE Group on our community planning team, and I'm joined by Noel, if you want to introduce yourself.
Yeah, hi, I'm Noel Jeanne. Um, I'm a planner with SE Group.
And we also have Julia Randall on our team, who's kind of our lead, um, in working through municipal regulations, um, and matters like that. She's not able to join us this morning, so, uh, we're carrying the torch forward, but a lot of the work we're presenting was led by Julia. Um, so, yeah, we wanted to have this, um, meeting as part of our, uh, zoning and planning regulation audit process. Um, when we do an audit like this, you know, we're coming in, we're looking at what our best practices are. Um, we're looking at what your master plan says, and we're, we're trying to give our professional recommendation based off of that. And we want to have this meeting really as kind of a pulse check for where we're headed on the process. We want to make sure what we're, what we're looking at are the things that you want us to be looking at, that we're headed in the right direction. Um, so we've shared kind of our interim, uh, thoughts and recommendations based off those initial reviews and some coordination with town staff. And a lot of what today's meeting is for us is, like I said, making sure that we're, we're headed in the right direction on this. Um, since it's an audit process at the end of this, you know, we're giving you a report. It's not, or it's not going right into like any kind of adoption process or anything like that that we're involved with. Um, so we, there's a balance for us in terms of giving you something that is going to be useful for you and is aligned with where you want the town to go. Um, but we're not, you know, sticking with you and to turning these into warrant articles or anything like that. So that's kind of the, the balance that we're trying to strike in terms of giving you our, our kind of professional judgment about what we think you should do. At the end of the day, you'll get a report and you'll have the ability to say, yes, we're, we're all in agreement about this piece, or there might be something that there has to be more discussion amongst the planning board to decide, do we move forward with this? Do we refine this, or is it something we're gonna set aside for now? So anyways, that's the way we're thinking about this work, um, and why we wanted to have the meeting today. Uh, I believe you should have gotten a slide deck for your meeting packet. Is that correct?
Yep.
Have you seen it?
We did. Are you gonna put it on the screen?
Yes, I am. All right. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, the way, we'll take you through a little bit of background about just kind of how we approach this um, at the start of the presentation, and then we'll get into some of our recommendations. Um, there is a lot in here, and so, um, I'm gonna move through some of this pretty quickly, and we'll talk a little bit about how we want to get feedback, uh, from you all, uh, as we go through it. Um, and we definitely can pause and, and get into the weeds on, on anything, uh, as we go through. So, um, like I mentioned, we're, when we do an audit like this, we're thinking about, uh, what we see as best practices for resort communities. Um, also looking at your master plan and what that says. And we did get some, some input from Liz at North Country Council as well, um, that we'll cover on the next slide. Um, but if we're thinking about our best practices for resort communities, we have this set that we were primarily working off of. Um, we're thinking about context-sensitive design, so we're thinking about the environment that, that your community is nestled in, the mountain environment, the natural environment, and how development, um, can nestle into that appropriately. We're thinking about walkable and mixed-use, uh, development. That's desirable, both not only from a visitor perspective, but also from a livability perspective from residents. And the extent that that can connect to things like recreational trails, resort environments, things like that. It's really beneficial. Flexibility for temporary and seasonal uses is becoming increasingly important, especially as. Winter operations have increased challenges in terms of resort probability probability and things like that. There's more of a pivot now to think about seasonal uses year round. So what can happen in the summer? To bring people into the community to make it a fun place to live or visit. There was housing options, including making sure that there's housing available for folks who are working. At the places that sustain you as a community, the resort operators, the commercial operators. We'll talk more about that later. Multi modal transportation, so making sure that there's considerations around walking, biking, and transit access incorporated in your regulations is important. Climate resilience is really important. You know, resort communities are often in areas that are more vulnerable to things like severe precipitation events. You know, especially like think about in the White Mountains, those spring, you know, melt times when. You might get a big rainstorm coming in on top of that, that can be kind of intense. So. To the extent your regulations can help you harden against those events, that's important to think about. Short term rentals, I don't think that I have to introduce that topic. But it's important to have a thoughtful approach to that. That's balancing property rights versus community impacts. Parking, really important. I think proper parking management through regulation can really. Help promote a good development pattern that makes. Transportation options convenient, but doesn't pave over paradise, so to speak. And then the last piece is goes back to the context context sensitive design piece is lighting and landscaping. So things like dark sky considerations. And site plan provisions that can promote aesthetics through the development process, really important. So ultimately, this comes back down to what we think of as kind of three principles for resort communities. Environmental stewardship, year round economic vitality, and preservation of community character through ongoing development. So this is one piece that informed our our review. Like you said, we also spent a lot of time with your master plan. We did get some input from North Country Council staff, which in the slide deck, we we said town staff, it should have been sort of said NCC staff on there. So I just need communication there. So they identified a couple of things for us to look at, which would be looking at vegetated buffers and screening for different types of development. Making sure that future resort expansions are addressed properly through regulation. Protecting view sheds, limiting runoff into some of your primary water courses. Clarifying thresholds for what's a minor versus a major subdivision. Looking at the workforce housing law and making sure you're in compliance and then. Really just some streamlining and clarification to make sure that your regulations are clear about. What's permitted and what your provisions are for different forms of development. So that's just some background. We'll get into our recommendations next. But we thought of this as a framework for getting through the discussion today would be kind of looking for. Each of our recommendations for us to go back to say. Are you good with what we're presenting? Do we need to go back to the table, drawing board and change it and tweak it? Do we need to set this aside for now? That's really kind of the feedback we're looking for at this stage so that when we come back. To you the next time we meet, we can have taken this a step further and present our final recommendations. So with that, I guess any questions about just like process or what we're doing? Before we jump into talking about our findings?
Alright.
I'd say no, it sounds as if we're going in the right direction.
Okay, great. Cool. So this is kind of our summary of our review. So again, we're looking for that alignment between master plan and best practices. And what you've got on the books. Overall, I thought we were mostly encouraged by what we saw in there. This column on the left where we found there to be strong alignment, you know, overall, you have pretty good environmental protections. Is really solid processes for pre-application consultation, design review. Things like that to really enable a thoughtful review process. That's really important. You've got a good balance of densities and mixes of uses appropriately throughout the town. Minor site plan process is is really important, especially when we're thinking about those seasonal uses we talked about before, like. If someone wants to just, you know, set up like, you know, some sort of food stand or kind of seasonal event space or something like that. Not having to go through a full site plan review process, that's that's really helpful. We thought your short term rental process and regulations made a lot of sense. The green belt zone is a useful tool for thinking about that kind of context sensitive design. Providing some green space, providing some buffers. Good news of shared parking, that's a really helpful tool so that you're not having people build too much parking. And there's some good standards in there around, excuse me, dark skies. So that was all really encouraging. A couple of pieces that we flagged to make some recommendations were around resort specific design guidelines. So there's often kind of certain aesthetics that you'd be looking for for resort oriented development. Bolstering some references to multi modal connectivity is important to make sure that that's being thought about as part of subdivisions and site plans. We'll talk more about workforce housing. There's not, there could be a little bit more clarification for as far as process for those temporary and seasonal. Businesses to make sure that it's clear that you could operate them. The next one was versus the Clean Water Act. So that's right now, a lot of kind of your like water quality related standards are based off of that. And you know, that's something that could change in the future. And so that's something to keep an eye on in terms of the federal Clean Water Act. And if there are changes to that, you may want to adopt your own standards. We flagged the need to identify some rules regarding parking in that green belt zone. And there's some pieces around dimensional standards for multifamily that we think could be cleaned up a bit. And this relates to, this last bullet relates back to the second one there in terms of clarifying. Standards and provisions around multi modal connectivity.
What they mean by multi modal?
So multi modal, yeah, sorry, that's a little bit of a jargony term there. So when you think of our transportation network, we think of not just cars. But also pedestrians, bikes, shuttles, things like that. And. Starting to see more even things around like, you know, resort communities are having, you know, electronic scooter companies come in and things like that. And that's a whole, it's a whole can of worms, but it's something that more places are having to address.
Quick question. So as a part of research, did you guys look at the now dated? But what is that? The not the transportation?
Pedestrian study.
Did you guys look at part of this?
They did it.
We did. Yes, yes. Mark, who's our director, wrote that plan. I don't know, what was that fifteen years ago or something?
Yeah.
So, yeah, we had a good, some good meetings with him and he was helpful in incorporating that into our review.
Now, what do you mean by parking rules or in green belt zones?
So.
Inconsistent, the two don't match.
So yeah, that's that is, that's I think the thing we want to try to help you address. Because right now, our interpretation is that someone could build parking in that zone based on your current regulations. That would be not not what you want.
Understood. Yes, what we're, when I first read this, I was looking for. More specific information about the zoning regulations that you identified as weak. Or needing adjustment, that is to be able to say, you know, this this section, that paragraph. Because, you know, I could read this and kind of understand what it means, but I don't know which. Zoning ordinances you're referring to specifically.
Yeah, and that's what we'll get into.
To that later, is that what you mean?
Yeah, that's 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 what we're getting into next.
Oh, and also, the what we will have to change based upon. The new state rules that came down in the last ninety days or whatever it is.
Yeah, we did include that in your in your review, our review, and we didn't think there was a lot that you had to change. I think the only thing we flagged, and correct me if I'm wrong Noel, was about accessory dwelling units. So we'll talk about that.
Yeah, the share and where we're in alignment, the shared parking arrangements. I mean, we do, we just, we just, you know, decline a site plan based on that we are not in alignment with our. Pound partners or commercial partners on that.
Gotcha.
I'd move that over.
I would too, yeah. It's been a problem, still is a problem.
Will always be a problem.
Yeah, let's figure it out till we don't run into it again.
Yeah, yeah. Gotcha. Okay, well, I think we'll want to learn more about specifically what was proposed there and what the challenges were, so we can we can circle back to that. I think our thought, when we're thinking about alignment, we're thinking about alignment with best practices in the master plan. But that's helpful and part of why we're having the discussion is understanding how these are being applied in practice and where there might be challenges.
Was there something else that you mentioned ADUs and we mentioned parking? Was there something else from state law that I think you asked one of your team members to comment on?
From our perspective, I know the one thing, when we met the first time, you were concerned about the. There's a new state law that says you have to allow multifamily in commercial zones along, as long as there's some certain conditions there. And I think you're already, you're already doing that. So we didn't see any, we didn't see anything in there that would compel you to change what you're already doing.
The the, there was one other thing I think in state law that would impact us and that would be the creation of or the potential creation of, I think it's called the social district.
Yeah.
That that would be important for a resort town.
Okay, I don't know if we saw that one when we did our review, so we'll have to go back and look at that. So.
That was one of the laws that was passed, signed into law.
Okay. We'll take a look.
I was also curious. What you were considering or or whether you put it in there just to discuss workforce housing incentives.
Yeah, we can talk about that too. Yeah, we have a whole slide about workforce and. Yeah, a lot of communities will have a specific workforce housing ordinance. And so we can talk about what that looks like, if that's something you want to us to explore further. And it's, when you talk about the state's workforce housing law, there's there's parts of it that are very clear and parts of it that are less clear. And I think that's where there there's some some pieces in there that we could talk about. Yeah, where you find yourself in that spectrum. But yes, there are, a lot of communities will provide some sort of incentive to make it, to to ensure that they're in compliance with the state law. So that could be like a density bonus or production of of fees or things like that.
Okay, so. Circumstance and that there have been articles in publications recently about. Roadless land now under attack. That is. A national forest, although we're not in the national forest business, but we're in it, we're next to it. And if. Any incursions of this nature were to occur, it'd probably be near us.
And is that, do you know, is that a designated roadless area or is it just that no one's?
No, just the White Mountain National Forest.
But that is a designation that the Forest Service uses and that's what, that's the thing that's potentially changing is. They have areas that are not technically wilderness, but they're designated as a roadless area, which is usually is more related to like logging operations. But that's not something we looked at specifically in terms of what what the designation is for that area of the Forest Service or the White Mountain National Forest.
The question would impact, would that have upon Waterville Valley?
It's a good question. We can take a look at that for sure. It's it's an area of uncertainty right now. But I'm I'm not sure, my understanding is that that discussion has mostly been about permitting logging where maybe it wasn't permitted before. Or well, maybe they've been permitted, but was unfeasible because you couldn't build roads. I don't know if that would impact like building, you know, non-logging roads or or permitting. You know, permanent development as part of that. That's something that. Other people, other people on SE Group would would probably know better. We do work a lot with the Forest Group, Forest Service, so.
Or the town is a wilderness area, part of the forest in the town. Sandwich range, the wilderness area.
Which is included in the definition of the town of Waterville Valley. Right, we tried in the in the master plan to make the distinction between what we call the village and the town. The town includes. Some wilderness area.
Right.
Like forty two thousand acres.
Well, no, not all.
So yeah, that's something we'll take a closer look at and there may not be a clear answer right now about it. But it's something we can at least flag to be monitoring. Okay, I think I'd like to get into the next part, which is some more of our specific recommendations. And then, yeah, we can definitely go through and see what we need to pause on, what we need to, what we're feeling good about. Like I said, when we were thinking about this, we're like, we're thinking about this as, are we on the right track with looking at this? Do you feel good about it? Or do we need to change course on how we're thinking about a particular topic or regulation? Alright, so this is just a little preamble before we get into our recommendations about site plan. So when you think about low impact design, it's a really useful set of principles to think about for resort communities. One of the things I think is really important with this is, you know, the ability for these principles to affect things like runoff and impervious surface. I think that's really important for where you sit, you know, at the headwaters of the Mad River. And you know, the relationship that your community has with those. There's definitely examples where development or communities as they develop over time and expand the amount of impervious surface. How that can have direct downstream impacts on discharges into those water bodies during flood events and things like that. So when you think about the mountain context, that kind of increases the importance of looking at these types of things. And there are also, there's some benefits too in terms of aesthetics and even sometimes costs for applicants to say. Alright, you know, we want you to put in, you know, swales and gardens instead of having to put in maybe necessarily like. A whole, you know, sewer system or something like that to handle runoff. So I think it's a really important thing to take a closer look at. We have a couple examples of that in terms of our, some of our initial recommendations. So looking at low impact development practices as part of the site plan process, I think is a really good opportunity. And there's some things you can do there when you're working with an applicant to look at. Alright, what are you, what is going to be the impact of the interventions you're proposing to reduce runoff on? Things like runoff and flows during different levels of precipitation events. So that's particularly for like a major site plan where you have a large project. I think I think that's a really important thing to look at. As part of that, you can then establish like an impervious coverage maximum. That would come into play unless there's some sort of mitigation that comes in with one of those interventions like a rain garden or a swell or. An infiltration basin or something like that. The third piece is as part of site plan, just kind of reinforcing some wetland or riparian buffer requirements. To make sure that there's some vegetation that can attenuate flows that goes into streams and ponds.
Yeah, we have a problem with this around around roads, as you probably are aware. Having any type of vegetative buffer, it doesn't survive.
Gotcha. Yeah, I mean, there's, they can be done well and they can be done not well. Roads are are often a different consideration because you're dealing with like. You know, lots of like road salt and stuff like that and, you know, other impacts from from that environment. So it can be, it's a little different if it's like contained within a site versus on the side of a road. And there's some different considerations. Um, and there's some different considerations there, um, based on the context.
Yeah, road salt is the principal problem.
Yeah, it's a big challenge.
Kathy. Just had a question for Alex as far as like process during this meeting. So this is a proposal, you're asking us. As a group, should we stop now and discuss this whole approve, approve of conditions table or reject to get you guys? You know, clarification, or do you want to go through everything and then have us go back and, and?
Yeah, I think we can go, we can, we can go one at a time. Um, and again, we're kind of looking at like. There, I know there's a lot of specifics in here and we're trying to just give you something to react to, to say like, here's how this would be implemented. Um, you know. We're, like I said in the beginning, we're kind of, we're trying to do that balance between, we're, we're giving you a report with our kind of professional recommendations at the end of the day, like. You will have opportunity to say, alright, we would maybe want to tweak some of this if we're gonna ultimately bring this to like. Pull this into our site plan regulations or in the case of zoning, bring it to a warrant article. Um, so I think we're more, we're kind of looking for like the pulse check of like, are we on the right track with this? Is this going to be a useful thing for us to give you some? Some recommendations on in the way we're headed or do we need to pull back on parts of this or be thinking about it differently? Rather than like, I don't, what I don't think we want to get into is like, you know, twenty-five foot versus thirty foot vegetated buffer. Like, I think that's kind of too much detail for today.
Um.
Morgan.
We have had conversations about vegetative buffers around Corcoran Pond. And how do easements that are in place affect that? Like you can't just change an easement because one side doesn't like it or needs to change things. So that is a huge. Thing in the middle of our town that we don't seem to be able to control.
Well.
Hmm, yeah, that's tricky.
Liz wants to say something?
Or the private property.
Well, yeah, just like I know it was a topic of discussion, I think last year before town meeting, we had multiple people come and talked about it.
Yeah.
Like there's a question with why won't we protect Corcoran Pond?
Which there is, I mean, so the hard part is that it's manmade. Um, so it's not regulated.
Okay.
Like any other water body. Um. However, if it's. Hereverly written with just um, like open bodies of water, rivers, uh, streams. There might be a way in the cycling rigs to uh, make sure that a vegetative buffer does stay. Um, but I'd have to do some research and do some digging on that.
Okay.
I think, I think too that um, Corcoran Pond is owned by the town.
Mm-hmm.
And the town uh, is one of the parties uh, to easements about the use of, of Corcoran Pond. So um. If an u- if a use of a private landowner impacts negatively on the town's property, the use of that property. Um. I think maybe that may, could be a direction to go in with regard to vegetative buffer, whether we're talking runoff or erosion or. And what have you, but that may be a way to get at. The quote-unquote protecting Corcoran Pond, looking at it as a, as a. As a uh, town property which the town uses for its benefit.
I mean.
Thank you.
Just a thought, one way to.
Yeah, the discussion is going, I, I.
Yeah, no, I think that's what SE group wants.
Yeah, that's helpful and um, yeah, we can, we can think about that moving forward.
So, cause the SE group, uh, do you know about the? Um, agreement between the town and the uh, surrounding land owner? That defines these easements?
Can we're generally aware, I think, as it relates to what we're delivering to you, I, I guess I'm. I'm wondering how deep do we need to go in the weeds on that in terms of that specific spot versus like. Adopting a general standard when we're talking about. Um, like open bodies of water, um, things like that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that cor- since Corcoran Pond was brought up, I believe it's its own zone as well.
I believe that.
So these easements play a, a big part in, in that zone. I'm looking for the reference.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the zoning map. Um, I mean, there, it's in the middle of the. Commercial zone, um, but it does cover a broader area. Um.
It was pulled out a while ago. As, as its own entity because of the, oh, because of ownership.
So Corcoran's pond itself is its own zone, is that what you're saying?
I, I, please check that. There, there's language in our zoning which, which, which plucks it out.
Right.
Uh.
I've never heard of.
Um, the special zone on the north side. On that market always brings.
Right.
But I will look.
Yeah, ma- and that may be what I may be misremembering.
Yeah, okay, now I'm seeing it in the, in the text of the zoning now. It's not, uh, at least on the map version I'm looking at.
Yeah, what is the text?
So it says a special zoning area is hereby created along the northerly edge of Corcoran's Pond. Getting at a point which is seventy-five, hundred and seventy-five feet, the northwest corner of the dam continuing along the edge of the pond. Then along the boundary of the town's property, the intersection of said boundary of Valley Road. Um, and then it, there's dimensional regulations. Uh, no more than six buildable lots may be created with frontage along the boundary of Corcoran's Pond. Minimum of a hundred and fifty feet of frontage. Um. And then there's required setback for those properties that have frontage on there, like a, a larger setback. Um, and that's, that's essentially it. It's basically just some additional dimensional standards.
Yeah, I think that was created when the previous owner of the property had intended to build. On those uh, separate lots and that may not be the case anymore, so.
Okay, we'll take a closer look at that. Um. Yeah, it's not showing up on any map that we've seen, I don't believe, so that, that's something to address and. I think you have to be a, a little careful with like spot zoning type stuff with these kind of things, so um. We can take a look, we can take a closer look at that and, and share any thoughts.
I think that will be flagging that. And since there's a lot of development that's going to occur in that area or adjacent to that area.
Okay. Alright, so um, we'll take a closer look at things around Corcoran Pond. Seems like otherwise we're on the right track with these site plan regulation, uh, recommendations. Okay. So um, a couple pieces here as it relates to um, site plan. For um, resort communities. So the design guidance piece is something to, to think about. Um. And really this can kind of help you avoid. Um, getting something that feels like way out of character um, for Waterville Valley. Um, you know, I think there is. Obviously, there's different forms of architecture and things like that throughout town, but there's, you know, in general. I think there is a kind of a theme around the kind of more mountain aesthetic and I think that's, it's a good thing to encourage continued alignment with. Um, and so um, this can kind of help you avoid like the worst case scenario, almost what you were saying before when you were. Um, reading your statement about what the planning board can and can't do. Um, you know, if it's. If codifying that can really um, help um. Get a, a, a good product out of a site plan process. Um. Another piece, and this is cross referencing a little bit with zoning, but. For temporary and seasonal uses, just making sure that there is a process around that, like some, I think there's some kind of gray area around. Um. Where those, are those permitted and where, and then what would be the applicability of um, you know, a site plan review? So making sure that that. It's clear that that would be a minor site plan and that um, those uses are um, kind of expressly. Addressed in the zoning, um, it's going to be important. Um, and that can also relate to if someone, particularly as it relates to seasonal uses. Some communities that are trying to encourage those, especially for summer recreation by. You know, trying to, to the extent possible, expedite their permitting, um, reducing fees that they need to pay. Um, because I see it as really kind of essential to um, promoting a, a four season economy and understanding that. Those play, a lot of those are not going to have the same kind of um, financial resources as uh, a permanent use. Um. So those are some things to think about as it relates to. Where site plan intersects with um, for sustaining the resort community aspect.
It's nine o'clock. And it is our. Municipal duty. That we pause for a moment here as a moment of silence to recognize those who were lost in nine eleven and two thousand and one. Did we pause again, please, for a moment of silence in recognition of nine eleven? Thank you.
Thank you for that. We will never. Questions on what we have on here.
Alan has a point.
Alex, I have a question about architectural guidelines.
Yep.
Does that include materials and color?
It can, absolutely. Um, it's, there's a, there's a balance that you, we, we look to strike at this in terms of. Promoting what you want to see and also then not being too prescriptive um, to box in, you know, um. People to something that might not be what they want to deliver or can deliver economically, so. That's, that's the thing that it does require some thought to um. Figure out what that balance is, but it, that certainly could be in the um, purview. Um. And.
I think it's a very valid point that this is one of the, I think, more salient matters of this whole discussion. Which is how is this town going to look when it's fully developed? That is, there are resort towns in the west that have a specific look and feel to them. And is that a guideline that we want, the direction that we would like to follow? That is your experience in the west, Alex, have you? Experienced towns that have gone through this discussion and have decided on. A look that is appropriate for them?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of what a good example, I don't know, Noel, do you have, can you think of what, what a good example might be?
We do have architectural regulations in our zoning.
I mean, I think if we expanded the architectural regulations um, beyond just buildings. Um, I think.
Was the issue.
Yeah.
The way it's written, you could, it could be defi- it could be. Determined that it only applies to buildings and we have a definition of what a building is.
Correct.
In zoning.
Yep.
And so that, that is something we need to, to look.
Well, as, as more buildings and redevelopment occurs. It is, I know there's a, I think one town, Deer Park. Utah has a, has a specific look. And I don't recall that well, but I think Aspen does as well. Anybody else have a comment on that? Is the, that is. It, it, there. We're at the place in our development where. Discussion of this nature, I think, is important, you know, when we look at the last developments that have occurred. Uh, the Golden Heights condominiums, the uh, Green Peak condominiums. There's more to come. And. Do we want? A certain consistency across town or?
I'd be interested in seeing their suggestions.
Yes, okay, let's carry on then.
Actually, I'd like to make a comment, so, yeah, I mean, um, I haven't come here since nineteen sixty-nine. Some of my first memories, right? You know, when the town was more integrated with the resort line, because it was the same guy running boat. Right? I mean, it had that same look and feel and that's something that always stood out to me, you know, that it was almost like a Disneyland because of that, right? Um, I mean, with, you know, with the resort design now that everything isn't owned by one person, I mean, this. I think we need to specify what's uh, the ski, you know, or Tyrell Group today or. You know, the, you know, Waterville Resort Entity, but then we have all the other business owners. Um, so I, like I questioned, like, if we're saying resort specific, are, aren't we saying town specific?
Yeah.
That it would apply, you know, across the town, so.
The visitor is not going to know the difference.
Right.
Right, the visitor.
They're just going to see everything as one unit.
Yes.
Yeah, so why are we calling it resort design? Because we're really, we control things at town, like our sign.
Resort with a little R as opposed to resort with.
Yeah, I think we can clarify, you know, resort community specific.
Okay, yeah, I think that. That makes more sense, maybe resort.
I mean, I, I, it's, it's, we do have, uh. We do have several paragraphs on architectural regulations that I think. What we're saying here is that we should probably relook at those in light of Alan's comments. There have been comments made, for example, that. Uh, just recent development in town, the planning board allowed. Uh, development that were, did not abide by the architectural regulations and that. That statement, or that statement made several times was absolutely incorrect. But we need to look at it because we do provide an alternate materials. But we put it in the hands of the code enforcement officer to make a decision, not the planning board. Uh, when it comes to that, so we need to look at that, I think.
Yeah, I think just having a, kind of an express part of the site planning, site plan review process can be really helpful. Um. Some communities have taken the step of like actually including like example illustrations in, in their regulations, whether that's in zoning or, or site plan. To just provide examples of what they mean when they're putting forward guideline, guidelines, like that's, that's an option too, it's. A deeper dive and gets more prescriptive, but there's definitely some different tools out there.
Mike?
But Bill's comment is very important, as always. There are resort communities and that resort community. As you go anywhere within that resort community has a certain touch and feel. I don't want to say we have lost it, we don't have that. And we all know, I live in Green Peak. Alright, so if you look at our unit in Green Peak. And compare that with the other seven units in Green Peak. Those new seven units look significantly different than ours does. If you look at the Golden Heights. Uh, development.
Hmm.
And we all have heard the complaints about Golden Heights development. It has a very significant different feel than almost anything. In the valley.
Yes.
Question that. Bill posed is, do we want to have? I don't want to say uniform, but a more consistent feel within. Our community or not? And, and I think that's the question.
It is the question.
Well, I, I, I think we provide for that. Uh, if you read the language, it says specifically what materials. But it provides an alternate mechanism that the town enforcement officer makes the decision. So in the case of, the Phil is, what I'm just saying, uh, we, I. It does fit zoning, the way we have it written now. It's not a change in the materials, I think, in the look. We may want to expand on that in terms of whatever uh. Ski, New England ski resort look is, I, we'd have to work through that. But we do take some of the power out of the planning board and give it to code enforcement when it comes to. Siding at the, you know, at some point.
The, the question, yeah, and I understand what you're saying. I'm not disagreeing with you.
No, I never disagree.
I never disagree.
No, you have to disagree.
But the question is. Where do we wish that line to be and how much of our? Purview to make things look and feel a certain way, do we want to be within this room? As to someone. In some other individual or some other room. And, and I'm not saying that's good, I'm not saying that's bad. I'm saying that we have to decide within our. Perceived ability, what do we want? And I don't think we have done that.
Okay, and I think what we can do to support that in, in our report is kind of give you a spectrum. Of what that could look like in terms of here's, you know, some very minimally invasive things you could do to encourage. Things to go in a certain direction to kind of, here's the other end of the spectrum getting very prescriptive. And then it's available for you all too, because this is going to be a bigger discussion. Um, that can uh, help inform those discussions going forward.
Rick?
Um, Alex, one of the things I feel like might be. Uh, missing here a little bit is, we have uh, temporary seasonal uses. But the fact that, you know, we're a resort town doesn't, it doesn't. But the fact that, you know, we're a resort town doesn't, it doesn't necessarily speak to how are we going to be uh supportive of uh, you know, the growth of the actual resort itself? So um, when I talk about that, like we have a gondola, you know, proposed. And what we can do to make sure that we can uh be supportive of those kinds of things with uh some guidelines around it to help maintain that character and reading that everybody is talking about.
I'm pretty sure later on we have some thoughts. We, I think we flagged that as something that we'll provide some recommendations on it specifically as it relates to the, the gondola piece. Um, so we can get there.
Thank you. Sorry, I jumped ahead.
If I, I just, just want to last name, Mr. Chair, if I may.
You may.
I just want to buttress what Mike is saying. I think we all here know, I was in the audience, but this was one of the key issues. The look of a recent proposed development that many in town spoke to. So I think it's our duty to try to deal with that in great detail, that it didn't, didn't fit the character of Waterville Valley, both in terms of use, but in terms of look as well.
The look is better set up regulation. Yeah, we have, we have to, we have to, we have to, we have to figure out.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you, Mike.
Yeah.
You and I always agree. But I'm just buttressing that.
Yeah.
We, we came across this problem, a recent, a recent site plan review.
It needs to be the problem.
Yes, and the whole matter was simply put in front of us, the fact that we have a great deal of work to do if we want.
So let's get on with it.
Yes. There's no, no denying that uh we've got to look at everything. In other words, we're going to be very, very busy.
Unless I'm traveling, I'm here.
Very, very busy community.
Uh, committee years ago, we.
Okay, SE group, you have the floor.
All right, um, we'll keep it rolling here. So, oh, this freeze, one second. Yeah, all right, I'm gonna stop my share and then reshare. One second. Slide presentation froze, I'm just gonna have to reload that real quick.
I have it if you need, Alex.
Yeah, could you share Noel? That'd be helpful. Great, thank you. All right, so next, that was, those are the two main things we flagged for site plan regulations. Um, next, we're talking, want to talk about subdivision. Um, so your subdivision regulations do address, um, also address things like drainage and there's a couple of pieces in there that, back to that, uh, kind of climate resiliency piece, um, we think are important to look at. Um, so within there, I think it's also a place to bolster um these, some of those low-impact design um provisions and practices. So thinking about um green stormwater infrastructure, uh but also making sure that folks are using properly sized culverts um is, is really important. It's a really easy thing to try and cut costs on. New Hampshire's wetlands regulations may, may cut into that a little bit, um, and there have, in recent years, have really expanded um in terms of anything, if they consider a culvert that interacts with the wetland in any way, which they define as a stream that exists, but this can apply as well to drainage culverts. Um, those are usually the weakest points um for infrastructure in a rain event. So um, making sure that those are properly sized and oriented um to the water that they're carrying under roads and parking lots and things like that's really important. Um, and then also in terms of where lot lines um are being drawn, just making sure that those are staying away, lot lines are staying away from surface waters. Um, just that can help with, there's issues you can run into where if you're subdividing across a water body, um, that can lead to some challenges. Um, and to bolster some of that, you can look at uh like performance and maintenance bonds to really uh hold applicants responsible for delivering some of those improvements. Um, and that can be, that is often a really helpful tool to say like, yeah, we, you're going to pay us this bond and you'll get, you'll get the money back with interest once you've constructed um what you're required to do. So those are a couple of things I can bolster, um, that kind of climate context, mountain context piece of subdivision.
Alex, have you ever seen provisions in regulations that um stipulate that if a culvert is undersized, is insufficient? Is there any power in regulation to uh cause the culvert to be dug up and replaced?
An existing culvert?
Yes.
I don't think so. Uh, we could investigate that, but I think, yeah, I think anything is going to be grandfathered in. Um, is my understanding.
Having severe damage.
Well, we just wait for the event to occur and then when there's a great runoff and all kinds of soil erosion and distortion, then we say, you know, that culvert wasn't good enough.
Unfortunately.
I'd like to be able to do something about it in advance of, we all know that the big storm is coming whenever that occurs.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not aware of anything you can do uh other than um ask. Yep.
But I have a follow-up question.
Yes, Mike.
And this goes back to something that we've talked about. And that is that I don't walk around and do nothing but look at culverts, but.
You do.
I do. I know you do. I rely on you, but.
Okay, what's your point?
As, as we walk around and look at some of the culverts, their size may be okay, but they are not necessarily totally clear. And that that is, that can be at least as big a problem, maybe bigger problem than size if they are not properly maintained.
I was told that the town is responsible for most of those cleanouts.
If it's, if it's in the town, if you're talking about the right way, it's not on private property. There is a, there is a schedule where Public Works does clean out culverts.
And they have to be certified culvert maintainers.
I, I understand. I, 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 I understand, but some, some of our culverts.
VCM?
Yeah.
And what do you do for a living?
Some of our culverts are not on town property. I don't know what the percentage is, maybe. Maybe you do, John, but I would say a significant percentage of the culverts in town are on private property and not public property.
Agreed.
And some, and I don't want to point fingers or whatever else, but, but some of those are. Huh?
Of course, you're gonna point fingers. Now, please get on with it.
Let's, let's just say less than well-maintained.
Well, you know, this, this is a point, I think, that you could bring in the Conservation Commission. They don't have the right to go on private property. They're not a land use board, but if there's a culvert that's not maintained, that's impacting town property or public property, then uh that could be brought to the attention of town either through the Conservation Commission responsibility is for quote-unquote, you know, among other things, water resources, water issues, but also through code enforcement, uh, which is a function of the, of the select board. Um, if it's, if it's a runoff going from one private property to another, that's between those two uh owners.
Okay, I don't think the SE group is here to listen to this.
Okay, no, but they're hearing, I think they are hearing the sorts of things that the town talks about.
Yeah, we need to, uh, we really need to bring this up, you know, due to discussion because it's, it's big.
It is big.
We're in a flood plain, so we really need to discuss this, maybe like a bit.
I think, no, okay, one thing, we don't want to, you know, be here all afternoon. And the next point is to say to Alex that, yes, you're touching on an area that we know is a problem.
Yes.
Okay, great. Cool, all right, I think we can go to the next one, Noel.
Here's a problem.
So this is, this is one that came up with our discussions with town staff and this is, is kind of an interesting one. Um, in terms of, you know, thinking about your, your position as a resort community, there's this, you have a great recreational trail network. And um, I think most, you know, applicants who might come in and put in a um a commercial development or subdivision, you know, would be interested in maintaining trail connectivity through that if it happens to cut across existing trail, um, but it could be good to bolster requirements that that, any kind of public trail connection be maintained um as part of a development or redevelopment of a site. Um, this is a little bit tricky in terms of, you know, when you have a, a public trail and private property, um, what your, what your jurisdiction is there is, is a little bit fuzzy, but there's definitely examples of communities through a subdivision process saying, all right, you need to submit as part of your application um, a, you know, a map that includes all current site features, including publicly used trails. And then when we see your plan, we're going to want to see that that trail is still there. Um, it's, it can be a little bit tricky to define what a trail is and what a publicly used trail is. Um, and that may not, you might not have, you know, as much teeth to keep that in place. Um, it's more of like part of the bigger kind of subdivision review. Um, but that can, that can bolster a little bit, um, some of the jurisdiction you have to try and encourage that recreational connections are maintained. Um, the forward-looking version of that is encouraging applicants who, you know, might be adjacent to a recreational trail network to think about if they're putting in a subdivision or a site plan to connect that to the trail network um for the benefit of people who are going to live there or stay there or um using that property in one way or another. Um, so that's, um, it's something to think about. That's also, it's not a simple thing, I don't think. Um, necessarily because there's that, there's the whole definition of like, what is a trail? What is a public trail? Um, in Vermont, communities have the benefit of being able to adopt an official town map that can then directly inform this. Um, there's, there's not an equivalent process in New Hampshire. So that's a little bit tricky, but um, we found some good examples, um, like from the town of Hanover about how they approached this. Um, that's a town that's really serious about um preserving its trail connections. Um, so um, there's, there are some things to work off of for this.
This is another issue though for us, Alex. Sorry. Reading a lot, um, but the town doesn't hold uh most of the, uh, well, does the easements belong to a private party for most of the trails in town?
Right.
So shouldn't the private party be the one commenting on a proposed development that could uh what's the proper word? Overburden or damage their, their easement to the use of the trail on that private property? How does the town, what, what legal right does the town have to come in to, in, into that picture?
I don't think, the town doesn't have the legal right, as I understand it, to compel them to maintain a trail, but they could encourage them by saying you need to document any existing trails as part of your submission. And we would like to see those included in your final plan and that could be part of the negotiation of approval of them, approval of subdivision or, or similarly through site plan. Um, so it, it's, it's better than nothing, um, but I'm not aware of anything that's, can compel someone um to, to maintain the trail, um, like outright from a legal perspective.
Cannot be a condition of approval.
No, it could be a request.
Request. It's up to owner of the easement, the holder of the easement to raise that point.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, I think this does give you more of a tool to maintain the trail connectivity than you would have right now, which is, is there's, it really doesn't speak to it. Um, but I think for most, for most applicants, it's, it would be in their interest to, to figure out a way to continue it. Um, but this has been a big trap, this has been a big challenge in New Hampshire for a long time where, you know, like we did some work with the New Hampshire Horse Council at some point and like they just had all these stories about all the trails they used to ride all over the state that kind of got gobbled up by subdivisions and then they lost access. So no one's been able to figure out, like, other than like getting you know, landowner by landowner agreements. That's really the, the main tool that exists. And again, that's, that's not within the jurisdiction of the town. Um, so it's tricky. Uh, there's no, there's no a perfect answer.
The WVIAIA has approached some landowners on a handshake agreement to uh use some of their land to go through the trail. We have a landowner that's on the Conservation Commission that is letting us use part of the snow mountain trail on his property. So it's kind of a handshake agreement, but I don't think we can really do a written unless I'm mistaken, uh, agreement.
That's not within the town purview though.
Yeah.
It's between AIA and the landowner.
So if we can, yeah, so I'm just thinking, uh, if we could maybe discuss it with the AIA or is, would it be appropriate to suggest that with the planning board?
So do we want to?
If we're gonna approach this.
Do we want to table this or do we want to?
I think we should look at it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Agreed.
Something we don't want them to.
More discussion.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I think we should discuss it. I'm not sure, I, I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't know what you mean by table.
Well, just because there, these are suggestions that they're making of what, and we have so much on our plate right now and if we are, you know, going through and saying, well, where are our priorities? And while this is an important issue, are we, you know, I, I think that there's some background that needs to happen before we could really even get there. So I would say maybe tabling it, not that it's not important, but just to there might be other.
Okay, for this year, you know, for this year to.
Yeah.
If we're gonna put anything in front of town media.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, but this isn't going to go away.
Right.
And we shouldn't forget about it. Okay, Alex, you pointed out an area that is a continuous problem for us. So now we'll move on.
All right, keep moving. Okay, zoning. Um, all right, here's where we want to talk about workforce. I know this is a big topic. Um, when we say compliance, like I mentioned before, compliance with workforce housing law, there's parts of it that are very clear and there's parts of it that are a little bit um less clear when you just look at the the letter of the law. Um, and part of that is because there's this whole piece around regional fair share of workforce housing. Um, that depends on the regional context uh and what's on the ground in your community. Um, but the really simple way that, um, if you look at the New Hampshire Housing Toolbox, which is a really good planning resource put out by state partners, they say practically to comply with the law, workforce housing must be possible to build in more than half of residentially zoned land and multifamily developments of at least five units per structure must be allowed somewhere in town. And so I think by some interpretations, you are meeting that and by others, you may be, there's some areas where it's, it's maybe less clear. Um, and when it comes to workforce, it's like workforce housing can take any form, right? Like technically someone could um have, you know, a, like four unit, uh, you know, fourplex, and if they have three of the four units are rented at sixty percent of the area median income, that would qualify as workforce housing versus like a larger apartment complex. Um, so that's, that's part of the distinction there is like, you know, there's a whole kind of spectrum of what that could look like. Um, and so when we think about resort communities, we think about the needs of a seasonal workforce, of the resort workforce, um, and kind of like the retail and hospitality workforce. Um, and so that's why we always encourage folks to think about ways to make this work for the context in your community. Um, so in general, you know, like you are allowing uh multifamily in that way in certain places. Um, I think technically, you know, like workforce housing could be built in a lot of different places in residential districts in town. Um, where we were flagging some areas that could be looked at further is kind of um on things like the dimensional intensity standards as it relates to, um, you know, if you're in your higher density residential, higher density residential district, um, a multifamily development has to go on one acre of land that could be, that might not be, you know, feasible for someone who wants to put in like a couple apartments um at low income, um, because of um the costs that might come with that. So like, that's where it gets really, that's where it gets fuzzy and tricky and depends on kind of your regional, regional context. Um, so a couple of things we, we would put in here that we would encourage you to think about is one is define workforce housing in your ordinance. Um, don't even necessarily need to define affordable, but defining it in there is, is a good starting point and you can, it can be as simple as pointing to, this is how the state defines it in RSA six seventy-four fifty-eight. Um, that's what a lot of communities do. Um, the dimensional standard piece is something to think about. Um, what a lot of communities do is they have a workforce housing ordinance that basically goes in and defines some sort. That basically goes in and defines some sort of density standards that apply specifically to workforce to say, okay. If you're putting in something that's gonna be at sixty percent of area median income, you could put in. Um, you know, ten percent, twenty percent, fifty percent more units uh per unit land area than. Um, at market rate. That's one way to to kind of address it and like be. Very much in compliance with state law. You do not need to do that. To be uh in compliance necessarily, um, but it's, it's a good tool, um, especially if you're trying to address that need. Another piece to it is um looking at some of your unit sizes, so. Functionally, you know, if someone is is trying to construct um something that qualifies as workforce housing. They are trying to keep their costs low to accommodate for the fact that they're gonna be making less than rental income. Usually they're getting tax credits and things like that that's supposed to offset it, but. It's very expensive to develop these days, so a lot of times they are looking at smaller unit sizes and other kind of. Uh, economies of scale to make the financial package work for that development, so. They'll, um, you know, they'll look at things like shared driveways or shared parking or things like that too. Um, but the size of the units is is a really big driver when you think about. Cost per square foot is like kind of all they care about at the end of the day. So um, one thing you could do is look at. Um, smaller unit sizes uh for work for workforce and that would be, that would be an enhancement. The last piece that that does intersect um with this is. The for. We noticed that in uh for some of the districts where multifamily is permitted, there was no. Um, maximum lot coverage specified for those. Um, they, that's right now just kind of being regulated through setbacks. Um, but there was a minimum lot coverage. Or there was, no, sorry, it wasn't a minimal, but there was no maximum coverage standard for multifamily, and so we thought that was something in need of some clarity. So yeah, there's a lot to to think about in here. And again, like we're coming from a perspective of. Resort communities have specific housing needs typically based on the types of. Jobs that are there and the, and the role of those jobs in sustaining that community. And, you know, if that's not addressed locally, um, then you're kind of, you know, at the mercy of the the broader region to make that available. And again, it it could be something where someone could make a case and say, actually, you know. It would be uneconomical for me to meet. To deliver a workforce housing project in your community based on the standards you have, and that could be the basis for them to. Go to a higher power and compel the town to allow it. So. It's not super cut and dry on it because it depends on, like I said, what what's available in terms of. Uh, workforce housing in the broader region and what the specific. Goals are um in your community, um, but these are some things that can, could address that clarity. Um, the last thing I'll say too is we know, you know, there's not a whole lot of developable land available. And in Waterville Valley at this point too, so. People may be looking for more of that kind of like infill development type approach where they're looking at smaller lots or. Getting creative and things like that. And so that could be another factor that might approach um. Address how you think about this going forward, but. We know this is a tricky topic, um, and, you know, we don't want to um. Put something out there that you think is gonna be, you know, dead on arrival and with the community. But we do think it's important to have a thoughtful consideration around this, especially as it relates to just. The role of of that and um, yeah, kind of sustaining. The resort, sustaining, sustaining local businesses, things like that. So I'll pause there, um, open it up.
Mike.
This goes right back to what we just talked about.
Which is?
Which is. If you're going to build workforce housing. What do we want that workforce housing, assuming you can find a place to put it? What do you want that to look like within what we want our town to look like? And you know, that may sound like a circular proof.
No.
But it's not. It it is a problem. Um, I know, I don't mean to pick on my buddy Tim over there. But the biggest, he is the biggest employer by far. In town, they seem to be able to find a place to put their people, I think.
With lots of struggle.
If if I can, there are a couple, I'm sorry, Alan, you wanted to. So, okay, a couple of quick things. Um, I think we have to be careful here. Are we talking affordable housing or workforce housing? Those are two different things, yes or no, in state law?
Housing is housing that is not over thirty percent of your income.
Okay.
So affordable housing, everyone goes by.
Right, so that's really, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yep, and then workforce housing is based on the area median income. So I I don't know what that is for Waterville.
So both would apply potentially.
Potentially.
Trying to get the same type of development, affordable slash workforce housing.
Yes, yep.
I'm sorry, workforce housing is based on the median income of the area?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So uh, and usually there's some tax credits that are uh paired with it if you are. Capping the rent at sixty percent of that area median income.
Alright, so yeah, there's definitely something.
So there's um, the CDPs, so the um. The Census Bureau has. Broken out in some towns, specific areas, and so it's where the densest. Area of the population is. So uh, I would assume that Waterville, the town. Would just be based off of where all the residential properties are. Um, and it may not include the workforce housing at the um, at the resort. So it may not include their area.
But it won't include.
No, no, it would just be Waterville specifically.
This is important.
We we want them then to move forward.
Okay. You want the floor?
I I'm sorry, but I have to leave for another uh for a select board uh commitment in about five minutes or so. Uh, Alex, Noel, I apologize to, there's several things the select board, as a select board rep, I wanted to bring up before I left. You may, you may have it on further down, but if I can just do that now as something that the the board would like, select board would like the. Uh, planning board to consider for our zoning amendment season, if I can put it that way. We do need to better define, I think, in zoning uh what a food, uh, what food service is. Uh, a recent case, uh, the, the select board was struggling and trying to enforce uh. Uh, what we thought the intent was of the zo- of zoning. Um, part of that was a record keeping uh problem, but part of that is that for food service establishment. The only thing in our zoning that talks about food service is uh restaurants and lounges. So I think we have to look at that language. It's in the use table and commercial, if you look at it. The state uses, I believe, food service establishment and has a definition of what that, what is included uh as a food service establishment. Think we need to look at that. I mentioned social districts is something new, but I think it'd be important for the, for the uh resort. Um, parking changes is new, we have to look at that. I think we've already talked about as a board, uh, better defining what a wall is. So you think you want to add that to the list? Uh, we're working on, we're still working on special events. The planning board already dealt with that. A zoning amendment was was approved two years ago. And the, the board is still struggling trying to enact that with a, with a permit slash regulation. Um, that's on us. Just wanted to, I don't think you need to go down that route again. I don't think, we just, we just gotta get on it. Um, just a reminder that the snow zone, um. The snow is mountain. But but the snow, it's also known as the snow's zone, is not surveyed. Uh, that's something you may wanna mind take a look at and then beat up the select board about. Lastly, I think this is, this is extremely important. Uh, the change in law with regard to detached second ADUs. The intent of that was to provide. Uh, more housing, right, to increase density in a, in a residential district for. Long-term housing in a resort community, what's going to happen here is that we're gonna see these things either. Already that are already in existent, buildings already existing, or new buildings uh turned into uh short-term rentals. Thereby defeating the purpose of the law. And I don't know if the law. Provides any way for a town to, to deal with this. The law is pretty specific. It is a property right for to have a detached second ADU. I think, though, we can look at our short-term rental regulations to try to. Uh, define better what we would allow in a second detached unit. Not that you can't have a second detached unit. But to what extent can we put, uh, can we allow uh short-term rentals in that? In that detached unit. I think that's something we need to look at and we need to. Put an amendment in front of the town and see what the town thinks about that, because that, that would be a big deal here. So anyway, sorry, I have to leave in a couple of minutes, but I just wanted to get that out in front of SE Group. Uh, for Noel and Alex to noodle through.
Yeah, thanks for that. That's super helpful.
Alex, please continue.
Okay, um, sorry, so just to put a button on the workforce housing discussion. Um, you want us to move forward with delivering some recommendations to this effect for you to then consider moving forward? Is that, are you, are you good with that?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, great.
That's one question I'm stuck at. Force compliance from the the renter, if you will, the workforce person. In other words, I'm a married couple, my income's so low, I can get into workforce housing. And six months later, my wife goes to work and we double our income. Are we thrown out?
Well, it depends a little bit on who's managing the property and what they, how they want to do it, um, but technically. And they, to get their tax credits, they need to be in compliance with. State and federal law, um, that speaks to. Then come on, it's theirs, you have. And then some of them do that and others might say, oh, you've lived here for a while and I'm gonna give you a break and. You know, there's that, they have that connection to a tenant or something, but technically they're not supposed to do that. So it's um. But to get their tax credits, they are supposed to um, keep an eye on that.
I think the general answer to you, Alan, yes, you get kicked kicked out. You get a divorce. Oh, that sounds like a right course of action to take.
I'm going to leave now, Mr. Chair, and for the planning board's um. Council, town council's uh opinion, you cannot replace me.
You cannot.
Because Margaret is not here or just period?
No, period. It has to be another select board member or someone appointed by the select board who is essentially a member of town staff, not.
Okay.
Someone else.
So we'll have to let the.
So you're down to six.
The chair will get cold.
The chair stays up.
But I don't know if you're boning on anything to me.
No, let's, let's hope not.
See you guys later.
Yeah, thank you, Rich.
Hey, Bill, I just wanted to comment on this is that uh. Uh, the resort Tim put together a a good presentation. I think a lot of us have seen it. There's a lot of good information in there. So as we do look at that, you know, we could pull out. You know, some of the referenced uh, you know, kind of industry information as we look at our. You know, the pencil amendments.
Yes, that's another problem that will not go away. We're about to work at it.
No, yeah, and there's good information, I think, in there.
Alex.
So we talked earlier about um multimodal. Is the term we defined, so thinking about the connection from of development to the road network, but also pedestrian network, bicycle network. Just as like a general planning principle, we, these things are really closely connected. Um, you know. The ability to walk from one place to another is not just whether or not there's a sidewalk there, it's also the. Uh, the distance between those destinations, so that has a lot to do with density of development. Sighting of parking, things like that. Um, so overall, I think you're doing a pretty good job on that piece. Um, but there are some pieces. Some tweaks to make to, I think, really kind of reinforce that connection. Um, so defining um those different elements, I think is important, like they are kind of referenced in different spots. But having a clear definition on what is a shuttle, what's a gondola, what is a bus stop, what is a a multi-use path, things like that. Um, is important. We talked earlier, this is less related to that topic, but we talked earlier about making clear that. If we're not permitting off-site parking to be in that green belt zone because it's not restricted, um, that's the zone that's intended to. Protect natural resources. Um, a really important thing is it goes back to the pedestrian network um and the bicycle network and a, well, and even for for drivers as well as. Um, managing curb cuts. Um, and the example here is uh from over at Conway, which has done. Did a poor job for a long time of managing curb cuts uh along um their kind of main strip there. Each curb cut is, those are kind of your potential conflict points, so like that's a lot of times where we, you see crashes. Is people entering and exiting at intersections, so every new curb cut represents a new conflict point. So to the extent you can encourage that um through zoning and through site plan. That you're consolidating those uh to the extent feasible, so that. You know, one uh applicant that comes in and might want to put in three curb cuts can put in one or two. Um, or share with an existing curb cut um from an adjacent property owner. Um, that is something that really, really helps not only with the safety on the road, but also. The safety of your sidewalk network uh and your path network, because those are gonna run across those in some cases as well, so. Um, seems like a minor thing at first, excuse me, but curb cuts are really important uh to that end.
Okay, understood. Yes. Well, we're gonna have that problem along Valley Road. Need to some extent, and again on um. Boulder path. Boulder path's gonna be redone. And. So whenever that happens, drainage is is done. All the drainage will then be established and then somebody comes along and says, I want to do a curb cut. Which will interrupt the drainage. Is that one of your problems that you're addressing here, Alex?
Yeah, that's another, that's definitely another consideration too, is, you know, it's a then, it's another culvert, it's another. You know, weak point potentially in infrastructure, so.
But then where does the drainage go?
Um, well, if it's running along the side of the road, then you'd, you'd, you'd need to run a culvert under that whatever driveway connection is, is coming in there. And then if you're, if it's running along the side of the road and it's a curbed area. Um, yeah, that's another consideration of, you know, is that you don't want that just flowing down the driveway, so that would go into. There'd be some considerations around engineering for that. And maybe needing to put in catch basins or or something like that.
Okay, moving on.
Uh, before we do, so the um, you know, here's the parking. Um, we had that in alignment, not in alignment, and I think just under this category. Cause it's included, we want some kind of recommendations how to handle, you know, the shared parking, you know, kind of issue.
Okay, I think. I will take, take a closer look at that, because I think there's, there, you do have something. In your regs right now about it, but we can take a closer look and see. I I guess, yeah, I mentioned you before, sorry, I don't want to like, I know we've been talking for a long time, but. You mentioned there was a, there was an issue with a recent applicant and if you can share any kind of information about what the challenges were there, that'd be helpful for us and. Preparing a recommendation.
Is he looking for the information now?
He did, that's.
Oh, I can, I mean, it's something, I could follow up with Alicia and Steve, they'd understand more about that. Uh, we don't have to um spend time on that now if we don't need to.
Yeah, for parking, um, looking into the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the ICE. Parking uh Generation Manual um is widely used by most engineering firms. That and the Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. Um, they have references to parking requirements and calculations, um, so I think that's definitely something that should be looked at. When redoing parking requirements.
Yeah, we can, we can provide some recommendations on that for sure. All right. Keep moving, right? Okay, um, this piece is, this is something came up in our discussions with town staff and. It's an interesting one to think about. From a regulatory perspective, but also, you know, some other strategies. We know the town is essentially surrounded by the national forest. Right now, we're in a pretty good drought, which maybe is. Right now, we're in a pretty good drought, which maybe is is heightening some concerns around um, you know, things like fuel management and stuff like that. Um just defining a couple of terms here that we think about when we were planning around wildfire risk. Um there's uh the wooi wildland and urban interface. Um so that's that kind of connection between uh a forest and human development. Um and so that's areas where, yeah, there's develop that extends out into areas with high fuel loads. Um and then fuel breaks are areas where there's intentional work to kind of address that and and provide a better delineation between what we call wildland and what we call an urban area. Uh if you go to the next slide, Noel. Um so when we talked about this, we thought about some regulatory pieces, but there's also some other strategies that can be taken. The Forest Service does have a process uh for community planning um called a Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and that's something that could be looked into. It's not very commonly done um uh in the east uh because it's just not been as big of a threat. Um but um that is some that is a process that exists. The Forest Service is certainly um under resourced and doesn't have a lot of capacity right now. Um so has to be some patience with that, but it is. There is an established process for doing this. Um there is also a really great program uh called the Community Planning Assistant for Wildfire Program that's um managed by a nonprofit called Headwaters Economics. Um and they have people whose full-time job it is to help communities with this exact challenge of what does it look like to plan for the future or, you know, for our relationship with wildfire in the future. So almost all of that work is done out west, but it could be interesting to explore um a partnership with them um to see if they can provide some assistance and they they have people there who used to be um fire chiefs and others who like can get really in the weeds on specific recommendations. Um so I think if you do that, that could then lead to long-term looking at if they if through those that process and if those experts determine it's necessary, there are some regulatory tools that you could potentially look at to kind of create um what we might call a wooi overlay district. So looking at any kind of regulations for future developments in that wildland urban interface to promote um to promote safety essentially. Um so that could be referred to how that land is is managed and developed in terms of fire breaks and things like that. So that's a it's a really brand-new conversation for planning in northern New England. Um but, you know, I think we're definitely starting to see a little bit more risk coming in in recent years, just with some of the drought events that have happened. Um and this could be a good process to explore and really consult with some excerpts before deciding if you need to do anything from a regulatory perspective. So we wanted to throw that out there uh for consideration.
Yes, it is a consideration. And is one of the recommendations uh trying to eliminate uh fuel on the forest floor?
I mean, it's a little, I I guess it depends if you I don't know if there's anything from a regulatory perspective you can do to encourage that, and that's kind of what we're focused on. Um I would say, yeah, if you can get in this Community Planning Assistance for Wildfire Program, they will know a lot more than we do about what's what's possible.
Yes, because if we were to have a fire incident around here, it would be devastating because there's so much fuel in the forest.
Yeah.
I think it's an important topic because then, like you said, it's it's needs to be, it's more becomes more and more important
Yeah.
as time's going on. So if we can get out in front of it, I think it's.
That's exactly the point.
It is preemptive, not premature.
Yes.
I wonder if uh from a priority perspective, whether or not this isn't something that we I think it's important. I'm worried about it. I think I brought it up before here, but um most of the land that's so from an enforcement perspective, probably can't do very much about that. We're not gonna necessarily influence the Forest Service, given their situation, to go out and clear up around the town. Um and there isn't a lot of developable land that's up against the where the, you know, where the forest is um that we're gonna be able to. So let's say we create a zoning ordinance, there might be one or two properties out there that we could say, you guys got to be careful about how much forest you have or timber you have standing within so many feet of your dwelling or whatever, you know, whatever your property is. So this isn't gonna influence an awful lot to protect us, unfortunately, unless we're able to get the Forest Service to do something for us. So I'm just recommend, I I guess I'm suggesting that, well, I think this is important. It's from a priority perspective, we got a whole bunch of other things to focus on.
Yeah. I think an interim step could be to um to get in touch with the um Community Planning Assistance for Wildfire folks just to like get their kind of like, you know, understand what they might be able to offer um and just see if you can kind of get some initial sense from them about, you know, what some next steps might be. Um like, I think just having that initial conversation could be helpful to at least just understand like and map out what um what you could do once you're you're ready to hit go on something like that.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, we can definitely put you in touch with with there. We work with Headwaters Economics a fair amount and um they're great. Um so we can definitely put you in touch with them.
I also would like to suggest maybe we listen to our fire chief sometime in regards to this. There's only one way in, one way out. And he has some plans for an emergency exit. That would be interesting for us to hear. Just a suggestion as well.
Okay. Well, Alicia, we'll listen to the transcript and we'll put it on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Have uh I guess it'll be Jim.
Yeah, well, he's not a fire chief, but.
No.
No, he says.
Chief Noise is Director of Department of Public Safety.
I think he does, yeah.
I've talked with him a few times.
Who is the fire chief?
Chief Noise.
Chief Noise is the fire chief?
The Director of Department of Public Safety.
If there is no one that is the fire.
I always look at Jim as the
Yeah.
Chief Fire Guy. Any case, yes, I'd like to talk to him. I'd like to have him uh suggest to us what could be done.
Yeah, just so we can.
Preemptively, yeah. Because uh the rain we expected on Sunday is probably not gonna happen.
Yeah, I just saw that.
Yeah, we're gonna go through another week of no rain. So it's definitely at the door.
Listen, do we have a fire chief?
Dave. It's Dave, yeah.
Okay.
He has like.
Yeah. But he gotta go on and on.
Alright.
Yeah, so Dave's the fire chief, James is the fire guy.
Alex, you have the floor.
Alright, believe we have, we have, we're kind of wrapping up here with this. Um I think this is our last slide with content. So these are, you know, more kind of minor type things that we we flagged and although based on the earlier discussion, the A D U thing maybe is is less minor because I think that was really thoughtful to think about the connection to short-term rentals. Um but yeah, like I was mentioning, there is the new state law that requires you to permit detached units. Um so that will have to be addressed one way or another. Um definitely notice that there in the zoning definitions, there's some um there's some cleanup that can happen there. This is not uncommon that, you know, when you update a zoning code in bits and pieces over time, that there's lots of different references and um so it'd be worth taking a scan through and we'll flag the things that we found. Um like, for example, accessory use is defined and also use common accessories defined. So for an applicant, that's that can be pretty confusing. Um as it relates to short-term rentals, um we thought we have, you know, you have some thoughtful standards in there about um where um you know, the duration and where and all that kind of stuff, we thought that looked good. Um another piece that can be helpful, um although it does really raise a whole kind of question around kind of compliance and enforcement is performance standards. So like, you know, do you want to have kind of like a a noise standard that's specific to that? You know, parking can be a challenge, like ten people, you know, all come from all over the country and cram into uh a short-term rental and they they're parked all over the place, like things like those are just common challenges that um can be addressed to some extent through regulation. Um the overlay zoning maps, um we saw before, we had a little bit of confusion about that. Um that making sure that those are available. We actually didn't have those initially. Um so making sure that you can folks know how to get there. It's mentioned in the in the zoning, but we do need the the mapping for that. Um minor versus major subdivision thresholds, this is some something we would suggest you take a look at. Um this should speak to, right now, it really just speaks to the number of subdivided lots, but um and and like road access, but it should also consider things like the scale of that development, you know, is there gonna be major infrastructure that serves it in terms of like water sewer or things like that? Um that can affect um, you know, uh uh minor versus major in terms of the intensity of of development and that you'd wanna bolster that. Um and then, yeah, my understanding is that there's some uh parcels in town that are not um uh currently covered by the the current zoning map. I believe, is that the correct thing, Noel? I was Julia flagged this and I I guess I didn't, I didn't quite look at this.
Yeah, the the zoning map that's available online has uh I think a subdivision up north in the town that doesn't have zoning.
To me, that's.
On the north side of uh West Branch Road.
North side?
East side, yeah. So if you're looking at the zoning map, um
Yeah.
On the left, the green following the river, it's above the thin green area. Yep, yes, so that whole area, yep. Those parcels, those eleven parcels are um not zoned.
On along River Road?
Yeah, it's called unzoned.
On River Road?
Not River Road, but West Branch.
Branch Road? Between West Branch Road and the river.
On the, as you're going up on the right side?
If you're going north. Yeah, if you're going north, it's on the right-hand side. And I don't.
I always thought that was my mountain national forest. I guess I'm wrong.
And then where's and then Livermore is up here, the parking lots. Oh, okay.
Okay. I didn't know that. So those are unzoned?
Yeah, it says unzoned, um which I haven't looked into the regulations for it and I don't believe that there it's even mentioned in uh zoning ordinance.
That's weird.
No, it is.
Alright, so anything on this la- this is the last slide. I think the last slide for this just says questions. Um yeah, so anything on here that speak to or, you know, people look at it. Go ahead.
I don't think you can hear you really well.
Am I too far away? Can you hear me, Alex?
I can hear you.
Okay, so my question is uh heard one H B five seven seven. That did pass in the House, is that correct?
That's signed into law by the governor.
Good, thank you.
So.
Okay, Alex, are you done?
This is, we are done. Uh unless there's anything you want to talk about on this slide.
Would are you, do you have a clear picture then of what we're asking you in the next step?
Yes, we made a little Excel spreadsheet that Noel's been tracking on um for everything that we discussed today. Um and so I think the only thing to discuss in terms of next steps is when would you like us to come back and present our quote-unquote final recommendations uh to you all. Um and this would be less of like going back through all of this and it would just be like here's what we have, here's what we changed or dialed in on further uh from the last discussion. So um I think we just want to know um I mean, we could come back um at this equivalent time next month.
Satisfactory, yes.
So that would be the ninth of October.
October planning board meeting.
Okay.
Yes, it would be the ninth.
Ninth of October.
Yep. Anyway, we'd come there, we'd we'd have this one more conversation and we'd deliver our final report after that, wrap up the project.
Good enough, okay. And again, my perspective is that I'd like you to point to specific uh examples of zoning ordinances. You know, tell us where you think the language is weak.
Definitely.
It is, uh it's it's good that you say these things, you know, bolster this and and improve that. But from our perspective, we'd like to be able to say, he's focused on that paragraph there. We're gonna try to fix the language in that spot.
Yeah, definitely. And that's, yeah, that's where we're headed for sure. Like, I think for today's discussion, we're kind of wanted to talk a little bit more about the the best practices and the higher level needs, and then we can take this and we'll drill down into some more prescriptive uh recommendations.
Good. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, thank you.
Take care.
And we'll see you on uh in October.
Sounds good. Have a good meeting.
Okay, I may uh two-minute recess.
Long as it takes five.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we've broken to committees. And so like, once we kind of get an idea of what we feel like, okay, this is what we want to tackle, and then like with groups of like two or three, we can kind of group these together. And then that way we can divide and conquer. I don't know, hard to think about.
We, we have this problem of the uh. What is a wall? And. You know, it's a specific problem that occurred when. Craig built a wall, you know, he moved all these rocks in and lined them up, and then. The uh. The select board decided that they were going to uh rule on a particular subject about.
About notifying.
Yeah, and I didn't, you know, okay, so everybody knows about that, and so we have to what now? Go back to it and redefine what a wall is. And we need some help from Liz. Uh we just, you know, do it and put it in front of the town.
Right.
Um, you know, there are others that. That need to be addressed specifically. I remember some time ago that uh. I got into a discussion about what was uh uh applicable in the town about the husbanding of animals. And that there's a specific reference to it in the. Table of use. Which is utterly ambiguous. And that it needs to be defined. Yes, but no, there, there's. Some time ago, that is, I remember asking previous board chairs. What they did and how it managed to find its way into the use table, I'll try to find it again and point it out to you. But there's some reference there to like six months or. Some period of time when. Animals are allowed on the town, and it makes no sense.
We're caution towns and regularly. Husbanding agricultural uses because agricultural uses are allowed by right. Um but it stays constitution, so.
But you need a lot of land to do.
Yeah.
No, no, what I'm referring to is that there once upon upon, I'm that once upon a time, there was a uh proposal, an idea. To do sleigh rides in winter. And that's how it found its way in to that particular, yeah, horses. And there was, you know, going to be a place, et cetera, et cetera. But it's still there, and it still doesn't make any sense. Rob.
Um so right now, I mean, we, you know, we're not going to take this time after two hours and fifty minutes to start going through this. But don't we want to define, uh you know, the process? Like, you know, I, I think we need to be, we can do the committee thing. Lock an hour, hour and fifteen minutes, you know, with the next meeting preferably at the beginning. And time box ourselves, everybody come with ideas of what wants they want to propose, let's say everybody can do two. You know, that they wanna, you know, focus on and just. You know, come to, you know, do it, because we have to have it done basically by November.
It is.
Unless we're gonna do a special workshop meeting, which isn't the worst idea either.
We could do something after they make their presentation again. But we're gonna do their presentation and see.
Okay. Inevitably, I think. It inevitably, I think, will end up a special meeting. But yeah, we have to have this ready and done by November.
The zoning changes, or site plan regulations and subdivision regulations, you just have to have a public hearing on it, um and then. A following meeting or immediately following, if there's uh no significant changes, you can adopt them, but. Um. Site plan and subdivision regulations are just um via the planning board.
Yeah, okay. James, we're delighted to have you present. Do you wish privilege of the floor?
Oh, thanks.
If you just want to listen to our area diet discussion.
One question, are you guys, as the planning board, restricted to a certain amount of zoning changes? So um like warrant articles? So in some towns, the planning board's only allowed to push forward like four articles.
But we did discuss in the past about what's a manageable number, because people can only digest so much.
Yes, they don't have the patience for it, yeah.
Or everything gets learned, no.
Yeah, but I think that, you know, four is a good number. People can handle that. All right, next on the item, but I do have a uh a statement for. The preliminary design review of the Tyrell Plan. It expired. So as part of general housekeeping, the board is addressing the previous application design review to ensure that the record is current and accurate. And while the deadline for the submission has already passed, this matter is being noted now to formally clarify. The status of the project. The board held a preliminary plan design review meeting for the Tyrell Development Company's proposal. To construct a restaurant with a deck on the north side of the Corcoran Pond on December twelve twenty twenty four. Per section five B of the site plan regulations, if a final plan application is not submitted within six months of the most recent design review meeting. The preliminary plan is considered abandoned. And since the final uh site plan application was not submitted to the town prior to June twelve twenty twenty five. The board formally considers this primary plan abandoned. So far, so good. Committee reports, do you have anything to tell us about the White Mountain National Forest, Rick?
No, no new, still there, new projects. We're all still, you know.
Yeah, I know.
Making a lot of progress on the Palmer lift, which is great, or taking the Palmer lift out and.
Yes, yes. So I understand.
Can see that going on from the valley floor.
Yes.
That's binoculars.
But um nothing, nothing else, okay, good.
Uh I, I guess I'll add. Um really awesome synopsis, uh and SE group was involved in one, I'm not sure. If they compiled all the results, but the results from the comment period. For the gauntlet. Are up on the Forest Service uh project page, so you can kind of read the summary of, it's categorized, it's. It's pretty good, a lot of, a lot of good um proponent related. Uh comments as well as things, there's concerns for the environment and lighting and all the rest of things you would imagine.
Yes. Okay, fine, we heard from uh Rich, he did give us his uh select board uh. Uh comments for this meeting. Next, I will point to John and ask him if there are any uh reports to provide from the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, so most of the meeting I had to recuse myself, but the part that I was involved in. Is a bit sad with um. Our uh mediation for the pond. That we're gonna have Rick Vanderpoel come in and scheduled for this month to do that. There was one form that wasn't. Uh filled out.
A form.
A form.
Piece of paper.
So at the uh. Forest Service level. Uh Brooke. Uh was involved with something, some type of a form that. I don't know, I'm. I'm very disappointed in all of this.
Yeah. And what is the effect of said lack of form?
Stop the project.
No, no, it was a form that needed to be filled out to go forward with the project. And for some reason it got. I don't know who was on Rick's level or the, or Brooke, the from the Forest Service level. Uh but. Very obviously. Stopped everything, so it's not gonna happen this year.
So then is the form now getting filled out and it just kind of goes on the docket again?
Yeah. Yeah, he's gonna re redo it, but. I'm so disappointed right now, we've been apt to think for so long that. I can't believe that just one form just stopped.
So when you say a year. This thing is dead until at least this time of year in twenty twenty six?
I'm not saying that at this point yet, because I don't know, I gotta, we gotta see what Rick Vanderpoel comes up with. For. The whole process gotta be done over again, or can we just? Um just do this one form and then we go all process. It'll definitely be next year, but I ca- I don't know what time of the year. At this point in time.
And.
Hopefully I'll have information for us for the next meeting.
I, I don't know if you can answer this, I'm sure Bill can.
What makes you think that?
Because you're omnipotent and.
Mike, Mike, what's your point?
The question I have is, we know we have an ongoing. Corcoran's Pond. Mediation issue. It sounds like that this is going to mean. It makes that issue worser.
Yep.
Don't write down. I don't speak that way.
Yeah, finds its way in the minutes, I'll have to make it in.
You know, it, 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 it. So when we're talking about our. Uh CPR, CIP people. Then the four million dollars, this makes that. Even more important.
Even more money?
We have uh.
It's way more than that.
Dredge the pond.
It's way more than that, but.
Well, I don't know how much it is, but last year was four million, whatever.
Well, the other part of this issue is. Uh and I think the select board is on this, I was hoping Rich would be here for this, but um. We allowed, the town allowed fifty thousand dollars for this. Project to go forward.
Right.
Uh first. Once three years had passed. We would have to re. Do this for the fifty thousand dollars that the town has kicked into this.
Right.
So we're at the end of that three-year period. So I think we have to reach out to the town again to. Uh go forward with. Keeping that fifty thousand, otherwise we lose it for this.
Nancy, you don't look happy.
So you just have to do a new warrant.
Yeah, we might have to do a new warrant, yeah.
Thousand for this March.
I, I'm, while I gotta talk with Rich on how it's actually gonna be handled, does the select board make that decision, which I believe they do?
Yeah, they do all the money.
Yeah, so I'm hoping that they will. Uh allow it to go forward for another. Year or three, whatever they.
And we, Mr. Bill. I hate to ask this question. Can we request, and I guess we would have to request. The select board or the CIP committee or. The gods of above. Or that godling there, goddess. To figure out. What it will now cost. As a warrant article. For the town dredging. This, this just keeps being sounded more and more important.
Who wants to know the cost of what dredging's going to cost?
Yeah.
Well, why would we get a final cost until we have commitment to do it and who's doing it and? If we did get any participation, maybe at some date in the future from the resort. The last number, I think we had heard about six and a half.
Yeah, or.
Or more.
Or more, because what.
Yeah.
Happens is they have to dredge it, and then they want to put in these things that. The sediment flows into, so they can just pump that in the future rather than have to dredge the whole pond.
Yeah.
The town also did look for a public-private partnership with the resort, and the resort declined. Because it's so expensive, I assume, but so that's why the select board even took it off the budgeting.
Yeah.
That it's just not there, it's not in the future plan.
I, I, I understand all that. I also drive into the valley, and every time I drive into the valley. And I look at what the pond or whatever you want to call. That thing where the dam is, I say, not in my town.
Talk to Rich.
What do you mean not in my town?
What do you mean?
If, my understanding, and I'm looking at my friend John. Okay. My understanding is that if we do not. Do something with Corcoran's Pond. It will eventually look like. Whatever you want to call that area over by the, the pond, the. Up in, up in front of the dam in.
The Captain Dam is what you're talking about, yeah, in other words, it's gonna turn into a old red. And, and lily pads.
And, and, and. We. Should not allow that to happen in our town. And I recognize the money is, is whatever, but the more, longer we put it off, the more coin it costs. And with that, that Mike said that.
Well, our hope was to, to the mediation uh project to go forward. Which would stop all of that silk from coming in, so the palm would be just as it is now. But this is.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, it's just the forest services, just so. Slow and the, I don't know how somebody missed one form. Stopped everything.
I don't think the, the Forest Service is gonna send any speed records about anything. But the point is that uh I think that the, the pond is maximum depth now is around eight feet.
Something like that.
It's not, not gonna be long before the, the reeds and the, the reeds and the lily pads start moving in.
Right.
Because that water will heat up.
At any rate. I don't know the answers, I'm not a, a. That knowledgeable in the area. All I'm saying. Is that. As Mike Capell. We cannot, we, when we talk about the look and feel of our town.
Yeah.
We cannot allow our palm. And it is a town pond. To. Get much worse and devolve, or whatever the proper term is. To what? Captain Dam area looks like. And it will in the next few years.
Yeah, okay, so what's your point? We can't allow it, yes.
So you can say, make it a priority for the co- of the CIP to discuss.
I'm, I'm making it a pri- I, 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 I'm not on the CIP, uh I actually will be around this year for it. But we cannot allow it, and we have to. Somehow last year, we, it was on the CIP. And the select board decided not to do it. Um I don't know what we do about things like that.
Well, no, if it makes you feel better, there's like, there's the CIP, you know, uh spreadsheet. You know, that is published, that you see, but there's a whole lot of hidden lines. So make you feel better, it is still there, it's just not visible to you. And yeah, until the select board says to at least recognize it on the CIP, I mean.
Yeah.
It, it's just not for us to worry about.
Right. So um then can we? So we, to your point, is it, the, yes, it's gonna be on the CIP, but it's going to the select board that is gonna need to push that forward if you feel passionately about that. Um topic, but can we as a planning board, um like in the next month or two, when will we get a chance to kind of look at the rough draft of the CIP? What's your thought, we were?
So we don't put it together, Steve and Mark did, um. We were going to meet with Mark in October, I think that was the next. Like tentative meeting out there, we didn't have a date, so I guess we'll have to talk to Steve.
So hopefully like. Yeah.
In November.
November, we might get to see like, uh, we can talk.
There'll be something to look at there, yeah, and it's just, you know.
Can we put that under like the committee reports, just to get updates every month or something?
Yes, yeah, I.
Okay.
I was gonna suggest that again, that it should be just that quick committee update thing, and when there's something really pertinent, throw it out.
This other doesn't go away.
Yeah.
Is there? A master plan, um we haven't done anything about the master plan, but I think that we could probably do that along with the ordinances that we're. Addressing.
And could we take off the town core working group? Because we're only meeting as needed now, it's not really in existence.
That's totally up to you guys, what you want.
I don't know.
You don't have any items on your agenda that.
We're not even, we're not even meeting, so unless there's a big topic that comes up, then Wendy will put together a meeting, and of course, if that happens, then I will bring that back. But.
Or take it off the list.
Town core, put on CIP.
Yes, there we go. Okay, uh I go over to blend master plan with uh talking about what ordinances uh need to be revised and the. Uh warrants. And that's inevitably what would happen if we. Discuss what we uh had suggested needs work from the master plan. Any correspondence? Nope. Calendar review is our next meeting, it was already discussed, is October nine. Replying. Any other matters? Do I hear a?
No, calendar review.
Any calendar review matters?
I don't know, we've got, we would mention a special meeting. Is that until after? After the SE group.
Yes.
Okay, so then our next meeting is October.
We'll hear from the SE group then, we'll get more into the weeds. Broken Pond weeds, but other weeds.
The sediment is.
And Mark had that information for us, so I'm sure it's somewhere, um I think it was something like. The deepest part was.
Twenty feet usually. Originally, it was twenty.
And now it's an eight.
And now it's eight.
So do the math.
Yeah.
So we got twelve feet of sand and crud in the bottom of the pond.
That's gonna be a pretty big.
It's a big dig, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so we will report back on that.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.
Have fun, Nancy.
John. Thank you, Nancy.